The point of having to go to somebody else before you all can make that decision.
Well, the money, the money's been sitting in the budget, it's been sitting in a pot that nobody ever touched. So, you know, last year was, you know, seven, six, eight, nobody's touched it. It's not for decide to do anything but to sit there. Now, when I talk to people about it, they're saying that, you know, sometimes with match, like with rent, you have to have a match. And so the idea is sometimes the match is pretty big depending on whatever it is, that that would be a pot for the match. If things have changed, they've changed, but that's why we never actually went to any money or asked for any money, it just stuck there in lieu. And when I needed loan lords, that's the only thing I could find to do so. So I brought it to them and I brought it to you. But I didn't per order, that's why I went and consulted with them first because of what they said I needed to do so. Because it's kind of like earmark how it's reading right now, that I have to consult with them because of what they said I had to.
Lou, what is your legal?
My comment on this should be understood in context of what we did back then. We were looking to match Parks and Wildlife. And in the next legislative session, Parks and Wildlife had it matched program, decapitated or eliminated. So the idea of having a pot here to match there, what about the wayside?
It doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, okay, as part of the budgeting process in the legislation. So the match side, I'm not aware of any federal or state funds now that qualify for match. The other part of this that's become pretty obvious is that money is sitting there unused. And I think it can be retained there as unused fund. But when you have the need to do, it seems like you ought to be using the dormant funds in some constructive fashion. And it certainly is appropriate to consult with the foundation. But right now it's a pot that you don't touch.
Why isn't it that, why isn't it that we, why isn't it that, I'm talking about, okay, we, the, why isn't it that, that money, those monies are not being touched?
Because it was a set aside kind of program. And so in previous budgets, you didn't budget to use those, it was just a set aside. And that's how it's been going forward. So in the first year that I got here, it was set aside, we didn't touch it. What I needed to find some money for Parks, it's been set aside. It wasn't easy and a real hard to do anything other than to sit there. And for a match in rent, if, and so whatever, it did happen. You have to remember also that the Parks Foundation was trying to underperform. It was new organization, so they were reinventing themselves during this time. So there was confirm or not, I had no, there was no one to confirm to even before I got here because they had actually had just done a lower. And so they just were able to start meeting and starting moving forward. And one of the first, after their second or third meeting, I intended to start using this fund.
So, Mr. Doug, is there a reason why, you know, coming from the Parks Foundation, is there a reason why those monies haven't been utilized more freely?
Yes, yes, sort of, it's very simple, it's my opinion, the very fact was, Parks Foundation didn't have a plan, neither did the city. That's why we had Heartland to come down. Heartland's supposed to provide both the city and us a plan to renovate those parks. We've yet to hear it as a foundation. Now, the city served from, in fact, there's a grant, if I'm not mistaken, that Parks, or Heartland has written to help you folks. But that's the reason we haven't done anything, because we don't want to do things that the city's already planned to do in place of person. That's why it's imperative that we not do this amendment because you don't want us to get cut off. We were going to go to HEB. And I asked the mayor, if we get HEB to bring their construction company in and we tear down the facilities of Pecan Park, can we put HEB on the building? And she told me yes. We found out later that HEB no longer has a construction company. So that shot. In discussion while we were selling tickets in front of traffic supply Saturday, Mr. Sack said, well, he knows somebody can do irrigation. We had promised this library $1,250. And this is leftover money that came from the 2010 exhibit game. Because they got money, they brought it back. Now, once we clear about $2,500, we're going to got $7,000. So I'm hoping that when we get this irrigation expert in there, that we can come to you and ask, can we put irrigation system in out there? But the simple thing is, is that without a plan, how can you do anything? I'm not going to come to you and ask for your help. I'm not going to come to Henry Ed and say, hey, I've got $7,000, will you give me $30,000 out of that water fund? And let's do irrigation out there at the parks, at City Park. So, bottom line was, we didn't have a plan, we still don't have a plan, we're still waiting on Heartland.
Mr. Jones, I don't like to, to argue with you, but let me give you some facts. You're talking about Heartland coming to give you a plan? Heartland has been here since 2011. And I believe you were one of the people that was so opposed to Heartland coming over here. So Heartland has already been here in the city of Florisville with a plan to develop a park. So they're not new to Florisville.
No, I didn't say that they were.
No, but they're giving a plan now, they had a plan.
So Madam Mayor?
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to the Amendment to Ordinance 285 requesting a presentation act as stated. I'll go ahead and read. And ordinance, ordinance number 215, as the ordinance provided for amendment to ordinance number 285 by substituting a revised paragraph three, providing for comprehensive recreational funding and providing an effective date. Now, go ahead and read the paragraph three. Expenditures of budgeted funds including the recreational utility fees shall be made upon council approval and made through maintenance for existing facilities and cemeteries.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion by Councilman, please, second by Councilman DeHana? Councilman Nieto, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman DeHana?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
No.
My motion carries for...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, now let's go on to item D, consideration in action to accept the resignation of Stephanie Lawson to the 40th Board, and then, I understand in your package you see the email that would receive a petition for resignation, a few specific issues, she's saying that she cannot serve on the 40th Board. So we asked you to tell if you would accept her resignation of Stephanie Lawson.
And she said why she wouldn't sign?
How do you answer that?
I'll make the...
Do you have any issues?
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Stephanie Lawson for 40th Board.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Delius, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Councilman DeHana?
Yes.
Motion carries, fine. Now we're going to go on to F, consideration in action to approve Linda Patterson of Patterson Associates. There was my...
There was, there was, at that point, I'm going to...
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I did it the wrong place. Thank you for the correction. Okay, E is consideration in action to appoint a member to the 40th Board.
I still move to appoint Paul Sack to the 40th Board.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Nieto. Second by Councilman Delius to appoint Paul Sack. Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
My motion carries, fine. Okay, now, F, consideration in action to approve Linda Patterson of Patterson Associates as the City of Florisville's investment advisor.
This is the name of the city council, Ms. Patterson is here again tonight to answer any questions that you've had a chance to have presentations and to look at it. We want to make sure that you understand that you need to have an investment advisor, different from our financial advisor, so that we won't seek to make recommendations, so that we won't have these part of money to sit there, that we actually invest in, in whatever way she says in. So investing is really tricky. The state of Texas has changed rules recently, and so you adopted a new rule. We don't have staff that certify the records to do that. Staff comes and goes. So we want to make sure that we have an advisor that can be able to do that. So if you have any questions, instructions here to entertain any questions that you have. And thank you for being here, thank you. I believe her cost is somewhere around $20,000, let me just quote you. An annual fee for it, for them to do this investment or to do that. And she has some very strong recommendations for us that we can do. Also, to help us bid also for our representatives or our banks, she wants to take a lead on that as well. Because I believe every three years you need to do that. Keep us in compliance, and that's really important.
And it is, it's something that we're in a position to do this, but right now, this time of the year, they're waiting till the new year, which is down the road.
Actually, it's associated with the calendar year. Because they're saying every year you're going to have, so not necessarily a fiscal year, but our calendar year. Yes, we should be able to do that in our professional services, I believe, we have the funding to do so.
And the money that we could use to invest are?
Well, we could use actually our set aside, our, you know, reserves, our ready date fund. We can use that part that is in the money, but I'll send it first. But also, you have a large hotel of effects of the city that we can do that. Two months, a reminder from day six, if you have some thoughts up.
Madam Mayor, the council, it's a privilege and an honor to work with the city of Florisville, and I'm looking forward to it. I wanted to make one point about investments because a lot of people think the investments are just anything that's long. What we try to do is work very closely with your staff and your cash flow needs because every dollar of the city is a potential, a potential investment. Making sure that your liquid money is working as hard as it can as well as things that we can extend slightly. So we work with staff and I wanted to assure you, receiving that your objectives and your policy, which we're starting to look at very closely, will absolutely be our guiding principles in all this. First and foremost, to safeguard all the funds. I think I mentioned to you when I was here last time, I did 20 years working for cities in finance. So I know how important that producer responsibility is for the council and for the staff. And making sure that funds are liquid, making sure they're diversified, and something we love to do, make them work harder for you so that you have even more money to put towards parks and water projects and, and other projects that I've been listening, listening to about the city of you. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. We, of course, will be guided by your policy, which you included as counsel, and, and working within those and with your staff.
Ms. Patterson, I didn't see your, your resume in the, in the packet. Can you talk about your professional credentials?
Certainly. I am a registered investment advisor. We are, my firm and myself and all of my managers and, and staff are registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission. I started, personally, I started in the city of Fort Lauderdale. I hate to think how many years ago. And I worked as an assistant to the city manager in the city of Fort Lauderdale primarily in 2010. And then I worked at the city of Fort, at Fort Worth for another 13 years, ended up nine years as the city treasurer there. And then I moved on to, and there I had a portfolio of about 690. Then I moved and was Deputy State Treasurer for the state of Texas under Senator Hutchinson, then Treasurer Hutchinson, before she moved on to the Senate. And I was Director of Investments with $20 billion portfolio. I've been blessed to have a very good and very large portfolio. But now we work with over 45 governmental entities. And because of my background with 20 years in government, all we work with is governments. And primarily here in Texas, but also in Illinois, New Mexico, Arizona, and then consulting and so forth, oh, yes, and Minnesota. And so we work only with governments, which makes us working within the markets that are restricted for government, which is basically US government bonds and agencies and money market, so that we can really look at structure and look at the value in those markets and bring to all our clients.
So are you the only agency in Texas that works with small cities like ourselves?
No, there are a couple, but we work a little bit differently than anybody else because, again, it's probably because of my background. I understand that treasury and the investment of funds is not just a standalone kind of thing. And so we work with our clients to make sure that we understand fully what your treasury is about, what your cash flows are about. We never have discretion over the funds, we never touch your funds, we never touch your money or your securities. And as such, because we're working with the staff on a regular basis, that's why, as your manager mentioned, we do any consulting is part of the contract. So if you're looking, and we keep your policies in compliance with the law, we're going to have some changes in the law this year. We make sure that we can work with you, we're available to work with you on internal controls and procedures, do a great deal of that. We work with everyone on doing your banking, making sure that we help you go out and, and get the bids that are required out of the law, make sure that we help you evaluate those. I do a considerable amount of that personally because we're doing it all the time. We're very, I think we give a lot of extra value because we're in that market all the time, so we understand the changes in the bank. So banking, treasury, policies, procedures, internal controls, that's part and parcel of our contract. And that all comes under the umbrella because the more we understand about you, the better we can run the money for you.
That's a good question, ma'am. Can you support our budget?
Yes. And you're wondering, can we make any more money out of that? Yeah. I wouldn't consider even offering our services unless I thought that we would more than pay for those services. I'll give you an example. With the rates being so low, it's, it's so disastrously low, it has been for five or six years now. But I think my, my opinion is, and my master's is in economics and finance, so my opinion is that we're going to see a rate hike in September. So you're going to start to see some more of the base, some more alternatives. But a typical situation that we find all the time with new clients is that the money is sitting idle and it's sitting in a pool at two to five basis points or in a bank at one basis point. And by looking at the different alternatives, almost all of my clients, we've moved even their liquid money up to the point where they're making 30 to 40 basis points. And when you can add, the, the idea about governmental investing is not the gold ring. It's not the wonderful one investment that you make, it's working every penny all the time. So we work the short money in a good interest rate environment. Over the 21 years I've had this firm, we average an additional 75 basis points above, or so, three quarters of a percent in earnings above what, what was there before it came.
Are you saying that the interest rates are going to be going up?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the announcements from the Fed are very clear on that, I think. And the consensus is from the street, from the economists, that the Fed will start to raise discount Fed funds. We were targeting two, but with a bad employment number last month. It's probably going to be September. And it almost has to. You've got a strengthening economy, you've got a dollar that's coming back, so it's helping the discretionary process that's been in place for the last couple of years. And the FOMC or the Federal Open Markets Committee is clearly saying, and they clearly said in their message from their last meeting two weeks ago, that they're poised with transitory factors to, to raise the rates. So we're going to be going, I would, I would say right now, the range is zero to 25 right now. It's effectively at 0% right now for overnight money. It will move to 25 basis points for overnight money in, in September. I'm not betting personally, but I'm real close on that one.
Excuse me, is that what they call speculation?
No, that is what they call investment planning.
And you're sure that the interest rates are going up?
If I was sure of everything in the market, I'd have an eye on some work.
We're counting on you, because you're telling us that the rates are going up.
No, what I'm saying is, no, what I'm saying is that when the rates go up, the spread's widening. And as the spread's widening, then the city has even more opportunity to gain in your own portfolio. But what I'm saying primarily is, even if the rates didn't go up, we can find better uses for your money than sitting in, sitting in a total liquid.
And we are, where would those funds come from?
The funds are coming from our account. So you have money that we are...
The general fund?
Yes, some of our reserves that we set aside when we get from last year. For some of those funds, even some of the funds that we have, that we're using in the lending, you can have them short term, zero to three months, six months. Those can make money, and so that's what we need to do. But what the state of Texas has said is that you have an obligation to make money. They don't want you to be safe and hold all your, like, in this wonderful bank. They don't want you to make an investment. So one thing that we did when we used to do training, that they, to do the training, was that you need to invest your money, to be the best care of this money to, for the taxpayers, is to invest it wisely. Which is why you need to have someone who certified in that to make those, to make those safe. We're not going to go buy stocks and play the stock market, but we need to be able to put this money in, put it in the right cities or the right accounts so that we actually have it to grow. I'm sorry?
That's cool.
Yes, so all those things, because right now we're just spending it, I'm going to just sit in bed. And it's not because of money, especially...
Can we invest, can we invest our heads to bed?
Yes, a lot of money, but we didn't invest, we didn't determine how much. She's going to look at all that, but we have that large pool of money. Because if you can imagine that you have over a half a million dollars just sitting in the bank and it's literally no end at all, it's not a good care, it's just a responsibility to spend it or to ultimately pay for it.
Good question, Ms. Patterson. If we choose as our financial advisor, also we'd be back with a financial plan for us.
I'm going to start working right away. In fact, Connie and I have been working, talking this evening about starting on the banking side. She gave me a copy of your policy this evening so I can see exactly how you constrain the portfolio and what's available for you.
So like a 60-day window?
Oh, easily.
Yeah, that would kind of put me as part of our, our budget, start to do some of our budget analysis. And one of the things we're going to pick off at the beginning of our wonderful budget merit on needs of our family is having not only our financial advisor, but also our investment advisor to come and present their plans, that's going to be part of the budget. So that is it. And then probably, you know, we'll make the money, see how that could work out well. But we're also going to be meeting with our auditors so that we can all have a team effort. All my money people are going to be together and figure out how we're going to make some money.
Lou, I have one question. We work so hard to build up this reserve. What does the installancy plan say about that, is that you can do it?
Can we invest it?
Get it and invest it?
Yes, and the reason we can is, is she's going to advise you...
Will you also take a chance in this?
No, not in the tax pool fund, State Excellent, which is run by the Controller's Office.
They're the safer things, so.
There are safe funds you can invest in, and they can be very short term. They can be from week to week, and they can be from month to month.
How big do they are?
Within, within the state law, which actually I wrote when I was city treasurer in Fort Worth, along with collateral law. You can, the only things that governmental entities can invest in are treasuries, treasury bills, treasury notes, the bond market. So there's a maturity, and it's not an open-ended, like an equity, like a stock. So as long as you, literally, as long as we plan it correctly, and that's why we work with you on the cash flow, as long as it's planned, it can be profitable, it can be at an unrealized loss, but we're going to plan it to mature when you need that money. And it will mature and we'll get your principal back. So there's no way in anything that you are allowed to invest in under the law or you can lose your principal.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the petition of Patterson and Associates as the City of Florisville's investment advisor.
Okay, I have a motion, may I have a second?
A second.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Delius, second by Councilman Nieto, Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
I abstain.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries for one. Thank you, council. Now we're going to go to item G, consideration in action to approve the second reading of the school zone ordinance adding B Street from Highway 181 or 10th Street to County Road 401.
It's under your tenure because you prepared the wonderful ordinance that you have before you. But this came before you last week. This is a request by the school district, B Street, to allow for cell phone usage. We need to designate it as a school zone so that they can write those wonderful tickets. This is the second reading, I believe this is part of the second reading because there is a penalty in there. This is our second reading as required. There's no changes. We ask you to review it. The school has requested it, and this is our second reading.
Do we exclude homeowners in there?
Yeah, that's right.
Especially we work for the school district.
How, come in, a school zone extended.
I can't answer you that, but they tell us what they want, and we only comply.
Who tells?
The school.
The school?
Yes.
So we can talk to the school and have the school zone on 97th, extend it to the city limits?
If there's other areas of the school that are concerned about children crossing the street and getting hit, or less stopping, trying to be on the road.
Thank you. I talked to you about this before, I mean, that's not in the ordinance, but we had talked about possible signings, and I thought, yeah, the streets are very narrow there. And on the street across from those old oak view, there's parking on both sides.
Yes, I spoke, I spoke to the chief of police and we're considering no parking. And we can put those up, it doesn't require an ordinance in somewhere. We're out there putting up the signs for cell phones, we put up the no parking signs as well. So we don't want people to do that. It really became an issue that we had closed B Street for a minute. But the school kept asking, we kept saying, please, because of the dip over there on B Street, when the latest goes out, so it's definitely an issue, we want people to still have the activity signs, but we'll put those signs up at this point.
Is there a particular sign to offer here, is there the old annex?
Okay, here, one of the things we're going to have to do, we're going to spend some time and go into archives, that is still designated a school zone. And so what we're going to do is go back and say, okay, this is no longer a school zone. This is, and once we actually make it not a school zone by ordinance, then we can move those times. But right now we can't.
We don't have to go to school permission development?
No, we don't have to go to school.
I think the doubt is, there was an ordinance, there was something pulling that part off. Oh, we pulled it off. I thought, I thought I saw one of them. Time to explain it?
We'll clean it up. But we didn't want to wait, we, they cleaned up to take care of the ordinance written to the school because they did request this. So we'll make sure this went to the schools and those were not school zones. Definitely we're there. Annexes, they should come over the annexes for the town. So we're going to look at some.
Yeah, clean it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the second reading of the school zone ordinance adding B Street from Highway 181 to 10th Street to County Road 401.
Do I have a motion by Councilman Delius, may I have a second? Second by Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Delius?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, fine. Okay, to item I, consideration in action to approve a consulting contract for broad project slash control of services focusing on USDA.
Monica's president of the advisor, I just, as she's passing it out, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're trying to do. What I'm trying to do is get Connie some help, not replace Connie. I need her to have some help. As you can see, she has a plate full, and she probably did enlist everything because we tried to keep it to one page, all the DDoDs and what's going to be expected from not only this USDA grant that we now pursue, but also one that we're applying for. And as you see, investment and things like that. So we were able to have, remembering, how is her first name, her last name?
Martinez.
Martinez? Martinez, that had approached the city, and I was all happy, to work for us as a consultant to do some work to help us do this. Now, she made a whole lot of money in her previous life, she was a comptroller for Pleasanton. She has experience, and so what we're saying is that while she's in transition, looking for a job full-time down the road, she's willing...
down the road, she's willing to come and consult with us. She's consulted before to work with us on the USDA and the many, many, many phases that that's going to take on. As you saw at the last track yesterday, a letter of condition is a 14-page document that we need to do. So we want to make sure that we got our eyes, put our teeth, so that they know where this is money now. You have to give me the money. So she's going to help us do the many things we have to do for not only the sewer, but the water. And so what you have here is a contract for a project accountant. I believe the amount per hour is $25 per hour. And I do have a not to exceed amount for the care purposes. Now, because she's an accountant, we can charge it to professional services. Just not a job, so she's going to do whatever, her taxes, she's independent consultant, I want to say. She's not staffed. There's no health benefit or anything like this to that. And so the staff is strongly recommending along with Mr. Moreno. Our comptroller is saying that we think it's a good idea at this time to help us out.
Does every employee have a consultant?
No, listen.
We're not limited to the consultants we're going to have, right?
Well, we're limited to consultants. I got three engineers, I got consultants a week. But I think this is what is going to happen. Now, she has in-depth experience with Into, which is our utilities company, service company. The program that we use for utilities, and that's really going to help us out. She has some further experience, so we want to be able to take advantage of that. Please, Dr. Microphone.
And I actually need this person to help me to make sure that all the reports that Andrea's putting out of utilities to provide to USDA operating. I just started learning Enco, and I started watching her. So my experience with Enco on the utility side is not that good. So if there's any errors or anything that were provided incorrectly to the USDA, that will be classified as personal.
No, we noticed, ma'am, there were two things. We have to split fund. We've always had water and sewer, water and sewer. But the USDA say we got to have water and sewer. They don't want them mixed together. So we're going to have to take that apart. It's going to serve differently in the budget that there's going to be a water fund and a sewer fund. You can't, no, 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 we don't have a fund. That is something that is key. We're also looking on the water issue is to update our meters for them so that we can actually have radio leads, and people don't have to write down little pieces of paper what the radio, what the leads are. It'll be electronic radio leads, which you all looked at some time ago. So those kind of things we're going to have to be able to do. The thing is, it's driving crazy. Is in our system, depending on how you enter the data, it can be First Street, the number one, and ST, or they spell out First Street. But when you do a Google or you do a search, it shows that we're different based on just how they put it in the system. Because of her knowledge and her background, we're going to be able to correct that and to take care of all those things to streamline. So I still recommend that we take advantage, and we are taking advantage of her, to get this information and this knowledge that she has to help us get to the point that we need to be able to do.
Of course, I mean, Ms. Moreno's going to obtain some of this knowledge that this lady has. Is there anybody on the city staff, if this is approved, that can benefit from this knowledge, that can be trained? Because I mean, but it sounds like she's been here for a short period of time.
Well, we hit six to nine months. I know that she was at Pleasanton. And we actually went over to Pleasanton, and actually, Minnie's going to be able to benefit from that. Andre at our first front counter, April, and the other one, this is a front counter, will be able to definitely. I have nothing to do with Into, other than do it twice. But we need to be able to have her to be able to help us do that. Even on our municipal side, as we add on the next module that they're going to be asking you to do, and she's going to help us be able to do that. Because the next year, we're going to be wondering right now, it's going to be our technology time. Our computers are definitely slow. We can't keep up with everything. And a lot of the things we're able to do, we can't even store everything. The mayor can tell you how long, she turns on the computer, goes, says hi to everybody, here's a cup of coffee, and comes back and waits for her computer to come on. It just takes that long.
So this money that we're spending, that can be reimbursed through our grant?
It's going to be assessed. This is what we need to help us, so we can be credit for that out of 180.
Okay, can we put that as part of our minutes today?
Yes, sir.
And Henrietta, I just want to stress on there where it says, okay, that on page 1 of 4, on 3B, where it states that she will be performing any other duties as assigned by the city manager and duly authorized by the city council. If we're saying she's going to work on all USDA, that's really what she should be doing. Cannot help me with any day-to-day activities other than what applies to this USDA.
I think there's a list of other, there's a list of other things, like the water to move on.
Because that's what's going to be quite the request.
Yes.
And to make sure that somebody else is benefiting from this, like the girls in the staff?
The girls are ready to do that. And I think that's really going to help us to get the training that we need in-house. We looked at, I believe, the name of the company is Tyler. That was Tyler. Tyler is who invented this wonderful program that we use. Training is just astronomical, and we haven't had any training in the state. So that is definitely something we want to, to definitely have her knowledge and to share. Now, I thought, she lives in Florisville, but I think she's still working in Florisville, but she lives very close to us, so she's definitely a homegrown kind of gal. And I'm excited that she wants to come back and give to her community. And a lot less than she was making it.
Is it maybe we'd be able to get, what is?
Well, we have a co-enforcement module in our, in our, right now, but nobody really knows how to do code. CJ.
CJ.
CJ will have an advantage on that, because we have a primary problem. We're not using it in its capacity. And because in her former position, she was a comptroller, she had all aspects. So from permitting, so there's even a module that we have for cemeteries, but we don't use it either. And so just if we never use it, and so she's going to be able to have that knowledge and have to do that. And Andre has taken over the cemetery part. My secretary is too busy for that. So definitely we want everybody to be able to, I may even let some of you go. I'm probably should do that.
Can you cover?
Nope, no way. CJ, go.
I'm just not sure about the one comment that she's credible for USDA directly. She's a necessary tool, but I'm not sure that her performance would be credible toward that 180.
Well, I talked to Baby and Rupus too, Natalie. She said that we're hiring somebody to help us with the account, like Raoul, Raoul, you remember Raoul? He did the water stuff. He's coming back. They're paying down on their end, so he's a gift to us from the USDA. But we can verify and make sure that her expense is part of the use. And we can use it for that wonderful 180, and we're about halfway there. If not, then we definitely have the money that we can use for a consultant, because we do have the professional services for the water and sewer. So it should be split funded between the two, once we're able to separate those out.
How much is in that fund?
For the, when if we have the professional services? I'm sorry, I don't have the professional.
I don't have that number. Right here.
For professional services in the sewer department, which is the USDA application for, we budgeted $15,000. How much we have spent up to date, I don't have that, but we budgeted $15,000. And then we also have professional fee on the same right order, $223,000.
Are those the $223,000 that will be used to pay Mr. Heiner and?
Mr. Heiner, yes.
Charity Novos.
Yes.
Very cheap.
And I think we would have 22?
A cap of no more than 20. If it gets 20, that's enough, coming back to the world.
22, not 25?
25,000 now. For the max out of 20,000. So if I need more to be to stay longer, I come back to the world.
Should we be working $40, $50 a day?
What if our day, we're going to work on a schedule, either three days a week, two days a week, we work on the schedule, yes.
She's certainly not going to make your 40 hours.
Yeah, because then you'd be a child because those 22s definitely ain't hurt.
After the captain, and so we have to use that while.
Does someone want to make a motion?
To what degree is, or an epithism? She's my cousin, third.
Third cousin? From understanding, third cousin.
Third, and my man, for second.
I understand.
Second wants to vote.
I'll make the motion to approve the consulting contract for project comptroller services focusing on this area.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Guedelro. May I have a second?
Can I make one comment before you vote? One of the things that Ms. Henrietta is telling me, it's important for us to kind of drill in on. His USDA requirement to set up their funds separately as enterprise funds and segregate your costs is an upcoming item. I don't know whether it's your intention that she worked with you on this, but that's going to be a fairly serious issue, which is to make sure that for Mr. Rodriguez's purposes, well, Rodriguez, your great consultant, that you can isolate what was in the water versus what's in the sewer. And I bring that up tonight in the context of her engagement, because she may have to help you with that in connection with your upcoming board application.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I think, that I don't need to know.
There's one of these we have listed.
Yeah, one of the seven.
And I don't, I don't know that that's going to be an easy task. Because we traditionally had everything from utilities all in one pocket.
And the USDA requirement, when we do our budget, we have to submit their budget, our budget to them. We also have to submit them annual reports as well. And so it's definitely important for us to make sure that our system, that we can pull up reports if they need to reflect that. And she's coming in literally at the beginning, and so we can make sure that we set up and do a right, reasonable type of catch-up.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Guedelro. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Yedder. Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
I'm standing.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilman Guedelro? I'm sorry, those of you?
I'm standing.
May I ensure that you pass the group?
Can you pass the group?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Three, two.
It's three out of four. I said it's three out of four.
So we're okay? Okay, now we're going to go on to item L.
Do we redo this, or are we just going to make an actual?
Did they do, did they take a vote?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the workshop dates from May 2015 for a bond restructuring and June 3, 2015.
Councilman Ortiz, motion by Councilman Ortiz, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Guedelro. Councilman Yedder, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilman DeHana? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Now we're going to go on to item N, consideration in action to approve the final plan for Miss Keats subdivision, A Rain Lambert on 1980th land located at 2021 3rd Street, Florisville, Texas, 78114, subject to any fees required.
We have this one right here, coming back for a final plot approval. Mr. Herbert's approved date, recommended approval. Nancy and Tom Ford, Nancy, they are also recommending approval. The date has changed since the last time we met with their president in time. We will have a new time, and any questions to Mr. Herbert? Is there any problems on this? Any problems on any of this?
No, at this time, I think all the problems are different.
There are no changes?
Okay. There was revisions made to Mr. Herbert's comments, but they have also approved.
I still moved to approve the final plan for Miss Keats subdivision on 1980th land located at 2021 3rd Street, Florisville, Texas, 78114, subject to any fees required.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Yedder, second by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Guedelro?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Okay, last one, right? Last thing that needs to be discussed.
In your, in your city electronic relationship, because of this confidential.
Scheduling, okay.
Yes, scheduling, and just some suggestions and references, not contract. It is basically the same contract, but the dates changed. This would not be effective until October 1. We negotiated some things with the district manager as well. I think I have a draft of what we've got for our, um, boxes, so.
What changes was in the package to what is being handled?
Nothing. They didn't print out electronic.
Oh, it's a minor, yeah.
Yes, yes. I just wanted to make sure.
I was just trying to email.
Yeah. So please schedule a date?
Yes, I did. If you cared to have a date, I did make a change to the salary, but you know, that is a question. But basically, it's the same format. What I am asking for is regular having a quarterly evaluation, just to do it twice a year regularly, every quarter. It just comes, at the time of good, it's time for the value to see now. So I'm just asking you to do it twice a year. You do all your other employees once a year. We can do it twice.
Okay, right average is voting on scheduling and date, that's right.
Yes, and that you're amenable to negotiate the contract. It's one of the new state contracts. I mean, send it to our client returns and see what comes back. This time you have it, but it's basically the kind of these roads. Everything here from, I can't go work for Hope. When I leave here for one year, I'm good with that. But we need to schedule what you want to do, and actually, if you could, it is only for actually to take care of the dates for the review, and to talk about possible extensions for the contract.
Lou, what kind of date are we looking at that's a safe date? What kind of date are we looking that would be considered a safe date?
A safe date?
Mm-hmm. September 30?
No, that's possible. I'm thinking if you want to do this, why didn't you say you have what you're going to have? Sometimes.
On your salary, you take anything in kind?
Sometimes.
Madam Mayor, sometimes they're going to do it.
We're converted to an apartment. So you're looking at June? June or July, I think you said. July, I present my, I present the budget to you in July. Will we have to do it in June then?
Second meeting in June?
Second meeting in June, we fine.
Do we have to wait that long?
23.
23, because the second's the last meeting.
So long as that there's no CNA's past J. If the CNA passed J, we're going to do it.
I want to do a conference, do you want to do or do it?
The CNA, J, and Andre.
I'm going to be both for the extension, yes. Whatever the situation makes me, it's going to be working for the extension.
It's 9:35, we're on.
Okay. Motion, please?
I think the question is to schedule a quarterly review and possible contract extension for city manager for the second meeting in June, which will be June 25, 2015.
Correct. May I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Yedder, second by Councilman Rodriguez. Councilman DeHana, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
And Councilman Guedelro?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five zero. With that, we adjourn at 9:30. Thank you, appreciate it.